I don't care about the car, I am fine. The car actually didn't even swerve, so I'm just thankful and I love to give him the praise for it all. You know, tonight. So as those of you that know me, I am Minister Margaret Chapman. And under the leadership here of our great and awesome pastors Bishop Bright and Pastor Leslie Wright. So we give them praise and honor tonight for being in the house. So let's have prayer and we're gonna get right into it. I love to see your smiling faces tonight, oh, in the name of Jesus. Father, in the name of Jesus, we give your name all praise, honor, and glory tonight. Father, we just acknowledge you for who you are as our Lord and Savior and just how awesome you are, oh God. So Father, we thank you for allowing us to come into your house to sit and to listen and to learn of you, oh God, in the name of Jesus. So Father, be with us tonight and we just praise your holy name and we thank you, oh God, in the name of Jesus. And amen. Well, we are going to continue our study on healing. As you know, we have been studying, our book is the Bible Healing Study Course. And I have thoroughly, this is a repeat for me, but I have thoroughly enjoyed going back and studying this book again. It has been awesome. What about you? Have you enjoyed this book? Amen, amen. Alright. So tonight, we are going to be on section C. An untamed tongue. Amen. I thought I was gonna get that reaction. In the name of Jesus, an untamed tongue, amen? Well, in James 3:8 through 10, in the King James Version, it says, "But the man, the tongue, can no man tame. It is an unruly evil, full of deadly poison. Therewith bless we God, even the Father, and therewith curse we men, which are made after the similitude of God. Out of the same mouth proceedeth blessing and cursing. My brethren, these things ought not to be so." Now I'm gonna read this in the Amplified Classic Version, because I want to make sure that we get this. "But the human tongue can be tamed by no man. It is a restless, undisciplined, irreconcilable evil, full of deadly poison. With it we bless the Lord and Father, and with it we curse men who were made in God's likeness. Out of the same mouth come forth blessing and cursing. These things, my brethren, ought not to be so." One more, in the Good News Translation. "But no one has ever been able to tame the tongue. It is evil and uncontrollable, full of deadly poison. We use it to give thanks to our Lord and Father and also to curse other people, who are created in the likeness of God. Words of thanksgiving and cursing pour out from the same mouth. My friends, this should not happen." And one last one, this is from the Message Bible, and this is the one that I really liked. It says, "This is scary. You can tame a tiger, but you can't tame a tongue. It's never been done. The tongue runs wild, a wanton killer. With our tongues we bless God, our Father, with the same tongues we curse the very men and women he made in his image. Curses and blessings out of the same mouth. My friends, this can't go on." So we see here in James, the tongue cannot be tamed unless we have a partner. And that partner is the Holy Spirit. So, we're gonna go on, our confession has everything to do with receiving our healing. We've learned over the last several weeks that you have to say something. I mean, you cannot speak to a mountain if you don't open your mouth and say something, amen? Romans 10:8-10, go there with me, Romans 10:8-10. Say amen when you have it. Romans 10:8-10. In the King James Version, it says, "But what saith it? The word is nigh thee, even in thy mouth and in thy heart. That is the word of faith which we preach, that if thou shalt confess or say something with thy mouth the Lord Jesus, and shalt believe in thine heart that God has raised him from the dead, thou shalt be saved. For with the heart man believeth unto righteousness, and with the mouth confession is made unto salvation." So we see the mouth and the tongue carries incredible power. Our words have power. Words have power. As we see from the Scripture in James, they can hurt and they can bless. But the power of words reaches much further than the impact they make on our emotions. Our words have supernatural power, power that changes circumstances and shapes destinies, amen? In fact, it is our unique ability to choose and speak words that distinguishes a man from the rest of God's creation. In Genesis 2:7, the account of man's creation, we are told. "The Lord God formed man of the dust of the ground and breathed into his nostrils the breath of life, and man became a living soul." One of the oldest Jewish commentaries on this verse say, "Man became a living, speaking spirit like God," amen? This should not come as a total surprise. After all, man is created in God's image. And it was not just thoughts, but words that God used to create us and the universe in which we live. When he said, "Light be, light was." What a stunning creation Adam must have been. He was crowned with the very glory and honor of God himself, and it speaks of that in Psalms 8 and 5. He was given the same creative power to speak that God has. He had the ability to arrange things and bring them into order with the words of his mouth. Words are spiritual, they carry power. Proverbs 12 and 14 tells us that we shall be satisfied with good fruit by the fruit of our mouths. Words are the way that God works. Hebrews 11:3 describes this operating principle of creation this way. Through faith, we understand that the worlds were framed by the word of God. Remember over in Genesis 1, God said, and we saw. God said, and we saw. God said, and we saw. But he said, so God never did anything without saying it first. So, "The worlds were framed by the word of God, so that things which are seen were not made of things which do appear." Our first step of acting on our faith in his word is to agree with and say the same thing he has said. We must agree, and as the old, my grandmother used to say, "Say the same thing" that God has said. Words also reveal what we truly believe. Jesus said, "Out of the abundance of the heart, what the mouth speaketh. By thy words thou shalt be justified, and by thy words thou shalt be condemned." That's in Matthew 12:34 and 37. That is why it is so important to say what God has said. Do this not so others can hear you, but so your soul will receive instruction what to believe and agree with, instead of the symptoms in your body, situations in your life, and fear-based thinking and talking you hear from others around you. Amen. Did you get that? I'm gonna say that again. Do not do this not so others can hear you, but so you will receive instructions what to believe and agree with, instead of the symptoms that's in your body concerning your healing, situations in your life, and fear-based thinking and talking you hear from others around you. That's why you have to be so very careful of what you are hearing in your ear gate and what's going on, what you're hearing, and who you are surrounding yourself with, conversations that are going on. You have to be really careful of that, amen? Confession is not denying physical facts, because we all know that, you know, if you've got a pain, you've got a pain, okay? Or something is going on, you know, I mean, you can't just say, "Oh, that's just not real, that's not really happening." Because we know, you know, that that does happen in temporary circumstances. But it is declaring, hallelujah, what God, who never changes, has said about the outcome and standing in faith until all temporary conditions line up with his eternal declaration. Amen? This is faith until all temporary conditions line up with his eternal declaration. This process began with salvation. The lost man does this when he declares, Lord Jesus, Lord of his life. Remember in the Word, it says, "The word is nigh thee, even in thy mouth and in thy heart. That is the word of faith which we preach, that if you shall confess with thy mouth the Lord Jesus, and shalt believe in thine heart that God has raised him from the dead, thou shalt be saved," amen? "For with the heart man believeth unto righteousness, and with the mouth confession is made unto salvation." Hallelujah, that's Romans 10:8-10. Look at how many times the word "say" is referred to in Jesus' instruction on how to pray, believing and receiving from God. "For verily I say unto you, that whosoever shall say unto this mountain, be thou removed, and be thou cast into the sea, and shall not doubt in his heart, but shall believe that those things which he saith shall come to pass, he shall have whatsoever he saith." Amen? "Therefore I say unto you, whatsoever things ye desire when you pray, believe that you receive them, and ye shall have them." That's Mark 11:23 and 24. And you remember last week, it was, you have to believe in order to receive, amen? So this is what he's saying, but he's saying, "Say whatever you're saying." The process of believing and receiving and speaking is what brings every benefit of our salvation promised in God's word from heaven in our lives. To tell someone you are healed because the Bible says, "By his stripes you are healed," is speaking the truth, hallelujah. Jesus has already redeemed you from the curse of the law in Deuteronomy 28 and Galatians 3:13. Here are five basic confessions for you to use so you can enjoy all God has for you. Now you know there's more, but here's five. Jesus is my Lord. That's in Philippians 2:9-11. "I confess the complete lordship of Jesus Christ. Jesus is Lord over all, and he has given me authority. As I confess him, his word and his name, and resist Satan in his name, Satan must bow his knee." Two, I do not have a care. 1 Peter 5:7 and Psalms 37:23 and 24, you can just jot these scriptures down. It says, "I cast all my care on Jesus because he cares for me. He upholds me as he guides my steps." Three, I do not want. Philippi, I mean Psalms 23:1 and Philippians 4:19. "The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want. For my God supplies all of my need according to his riches and glory by Christ Jesus," amen? Four, I am free from sin, sickness, disease, sorrow, grief, and fear. That's Isaiah 53:3-5, Matthew 8:17, and 1 Peter 2:24. Every sin, sickness, disease, sorrow, and grief was laid on Jesus, so that I could be free from them, hallelujah. Therefore today I am forgiven, healed, healthy, and well, amen? I live in divine health. Those are confessions, those are things that say out of your mouth, confess them. Number five, Jesus has made unto me wisdom, righteousness, sanctification, and redemption. 1 Corinthians 1:30 and Colossians 2:10. "I confess that Jesus is my wisdom, righteousness, sanctification, and redemption. Only in him am I entirely complete. Nothing else can complete us but Jesus." Take a little thought here. You know, as you're growing up and as you come into the knowledge of things, I don't know about you, so I'm speaking of myself. There was a time in my life when I searched for everything but God. And I thought, if I achieve this, then it's gonna be good, I'm gonna be happy, I'm gonna have what it is that I want. If I receive this, or if I do this. But I came to find out, hallelujah, that only Jesus can satisfy. Only Jesus can make me whole and complete, nothing lacking, nothing broken, or nothing missing, amen? Only Jesus can do that. Continue to change your circumstances by filling your heart with the word of God. Confess these truths and other scriptures so that the words that come out of your mouth are life-changing words. Let your word be God's word, amen? As James 3:8-10 says, "We can use our tongue to bring blessings or cursings into our life." Let's go over to Proverbs 18:21. If you'll turn there with me, Proverbs 18:21. And it reads in the King James Version, "Death and life are in the power of the tongue, and they that love it shall eat the fruit thereof." Now the Living Bible says, "Those who love to talk will suffer the consequences." Men have died for saying the wrong thing. The Message Bible says, "Words kill, words give life, they are either poison or fruit, you choose." Amen? Another scripture, go over to 1 Peter 3:10. 1 Peter 3:10. And this scripture is talking about, "Love life keeps your tongue." Now I'm gonna be reading from the Living Bible, and it reads, "If you want a happy, good life, keep control of your tongue and guard your lips from telling lies." Amen? Alright. Now, Psalms 141 and 3. It's teaching us about setting a guard over our mouth. The Living Bible says, "Help me, Lord, to keep my mouth shut and my lips sealed." Amen? I don't know about you, but there has been times, you know, that Proverbs 18:21 says, "The power of life and death are in the tongue." How many times have you said something and immediately wished that you could take it back? But once it is out there, you cannot take it back. And you know, Satan with his crafty self, he hears sometimes when we say certain things that we wish we could take back, and he says, "Oh, I heard that." But, we have a way. Glory to God. The way and the only truly way to tame your tongue is by partnering with the Holy Spirit, amen? Partnering with the Holy Spirit. Of our own selves, we cannot tame that tongue. The Word tells us, it tells us in verse after verse after verse that we've read, that we alone cannot tame the tongue. But if we partner with the Holy Spirit, that tongue can be tamed. That's a powerful and spiritually grounded statement. The idea that taming the tongue, which often symbolizes self-control over our words and attitudes, can only be truly done by partnering with the Holy Spirit. Let's look deeper. James 3:8, "But no human can tame the tongue; it's a restless evil, full of deadly poison." We read that earlier. This verse highlights the inherent difficulty of controlling our speech. It underscores that human willpower alone is insufficient, that where the Holy, that's where the Holy Spirit comes in. The Holy Spirit convicts us when we speak in ways that hurts others or misrepresents Christ. He teaches us when to speak, what to say, and when to remain silent. Have you ever been in a situation when you just wanted to say something? Ooh, you just said, you know, "If I could just, if I could just say this, I want to just say this," you know? But you, but there's something on the inside that is saying, uh-uh, uh-uh. Keep your mouth closed, don't say it, and begin, it's like a gnawing here, you know? You say, "You know what? Nah, that's not right." And I say many times to myself, I tell the devil, I say, "I refuse to let you take me out of character, take me out of the character of God, and say something that is not pleasing to him." But it's the Holy Spirit, but you have to partner with the Holy Spirit in order to do that. Again, he teaches us when to speak, what to say. Hallelujah. In Galatians 5:22 and 23, go there with me, please, Galatians 5:22 and 23. Many of us can quote that by heart, we know that lists the fruit of the Spirit, hallelujah. Love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. These qualities directly affect how we use our words. Self-control is a fruit, not a force of will. The Holy Spirit doesn't just convict, he empowers and transforms. Partnering with him means yielding daily to his leadership, listening before we speak, letting the word of God fill our hearts. Partnering practically in prayer as a spirit daily, ask the spirit daily, I'm sorry. Ask the spirit daily for help to speak with grace and wisdom. Let verses about speech renew your mind. I'm gonna give you one in Proverbs 15 and 1. In the King James Version, it says, "A soft answer turneth away wrath, but grievous words stir up an anger." In Ephesians 4:29, King James says, "Let no corrupt communication proceed out of your mouth, but that which is good to the use of edifying, that it may minister grace unto the hearers." So you want what you're saying to minister grace to the hearers, amen? Now the Amplified Classic Version says this, "Let no foul or polluting language, nor evil word, nor unwholesome or worthless talk, ever come out of your mouth. But only such speech as is good and beneficial to the spiritual progress of others, as is fitting to the need and occasion, that it may be a blessing and give grace, God's favor, to those who hear it." Amen? We also have to train ourselves to pause and listen before speaking and to be sensitive to the Spirit's prompting. Pause. And I had to learn that, so again, I speak of myself, you know, I, there, I, I hope something would come up and it was, you know, it was just coming out, you know? But, and I thank God that he has blessed me with that, because I partnered with the Holy Spirit and I yield my tongue to the Holy Spirit. But I had to learn to pause and to listen to what the Holy Spirit was saying, amen? The main, well, I won't say the main idea, but what I'd like for you to take from this is controlling our words is not just a matter of discipline, it's a matter of surrender. It's a matter of surrender, amen? James reminds us that no one can tame the tongue on their own. That means we need divine help. The Holy Spirit doesn't just make us feel good, he transforms us. He works in our hearts to produce self-control and wisdom needed to speak life and truth. Three practical ways to partner with the Holy Spirit. Invite his presence daily. Pray, "Holy Spirit, take control of my heart and my mouth today." Pause before you speak, let the Spirit check your motives before the words leave your lips. Silence is often spirit-led. Let the word fill you. The more scripture you feed on, the more your words will reflect God's heart. When you're tempted sometime to speak in anger, gossip, or harshness, stop and ask. And you know, some, we have to be real, because we're in life, we're lifing, okay? And there's no, none of us are perfect, amen? And there are times when that thing starts rolling up in our mouth and our tongues, want to say certain things. But we stop and ask. "Holy Spirit, what would you have me to say right now? Or should I say nothing at all? Should I just keep quiet?" And as we used to tell the kids, zip your lips. Amen? The Holy Spirit is standing by ready to help you subdue and monitor to help you subdue and monitor your tongue. The Holy Spirit is ever-present, standing by, ready to help you seduce, subdue, and monitor your tongue. He empowers you to speak life, not death, to respond with grace, not anger, to remain silent when needed, and to speak with wisdom when it's time. You are not alone in the struggle for self-control. God has given you a helper. In Jude 20, it says, "But ye beloved, building up yourselves on your most holy faith, praying in the Holy Ghost." God has given you a helper, the Holy Ghost. He's there, our helper, stand-by, sustainer, all of that. The Holy Ghost is there. He is standing by. In the name of Jesus, hallelujah. 1 Corinthians 14:4. Just jot that down. I'm gonna read it from the English standard, standard version. "The one who speaks in a tongue builds up himself." And part B, part A of that is what I wanted to bring out. And that says, "The one who speaks in a tongue builds up himself." And then John 7:38 in the Amplified Classic Edition. It reads, "He who believes in Me, who cleaves to, and trusts in, and relies on Me, as the Scripture has said, from his innermost being shall flow continuously springs and rivers of living water." Hallelujah. Yes. So we see here that our words are powerful. And our words, that's why we have to watch what we say in the name of Jesus. But we want to make sure our words are lining up with the Word of God because that's what makes the difference. Because we're partnering with the Holy Spirit and not just saying, you know, all over the map, you know? But saying what the Word of God says, praying what the Word of God says, speaking what the Word of God says, believing what the Word of God says. And then confessing that saying something. And that's what the Word of God says. Saying what the Word of God says, amen? Praise God. So we're gonna move on to the next section. And it says, "Traditions of men." Traditions of men. What is meant by traditions? Beliefs passed down? Philosophies? Genealogies? Conspiracies? And theories? I know probably just about every one of us here, sitting here tonight, can think about a theory or can think about a tradition, man's tradition. And as you, the longer you walk in this life and you receive that revelation knowledge, you realize, that wasn't in the Bible. That's not what, that's not what it says. I have been sitting, and I praise God for it, and listening. And the speaker has said something. And I'm sitting there and I'm thinking, "That is not what that says? And that is not what that Scripture means?" That's why, and you, you have heard Bishop always say this, Bishop Wright say this, "You better know the Word of God for yourself." So, and, and also it says, "If it's not in the Word of God, you are under no obligation to believe it." But it's in the Word of God. So that's why knowing and getting that word down on the inside of us and that word when it comes a time, and I'm gonna go back when I'm in reference to healing. You gotta know that word when it's concerning healing. You gotta know those Scriptures. You gotta know what scripture you're standing on. If there is something going on in your body, you better have a Scripture to go with it. You know what I'm saying? Or Scripture to stand on is what I should say. Mine was Isaiah 53:5 and, and 1 Peter 2:24 and Galatians 3:13. I would say those when I was going through that challenge that I was having with my legs and my feet. And I began to confess that every day. Every day. And I would just thank God, it says, "Father, you redeemed me from the curse of the law. You redeemed me from sickness. And for sickness, you gave me health. And for poverty, you gave me wealth. And for death, you gave me eternal life." And the thief comes in John 10:10, "to steal, to kill, and to destroy." That's his job. That's what he wants to do to all of us. He wants to take us out. But God says, "But I come, I, I come that you might have life and you might have it more abundantly." That means to the full, to the overflow. Hallelujah. In the name of Jesus. Like there springs of living water flowing up without it in your belly. Hallelujah. Glory to God. Glory to God. Now I'm gonna go back to that traditions of men. But that was just the Holy Spirit saying that to me. Mark 7:13 in the New International Version says, "Thus you nullify the Word of God by your tradition that you have handed down, and you do many things like that." Jesus strongly condemns this practice because it leads people away from God's intent and replaces divine truth with human systems or human way of thinking. Traditions are not inherently wrong, but when they override or contradict Scripture or the Word of God, they can become spiritually dangerous. Amen? True worship, worship must be based on God's truth, not merely human customs. And we, I was thinking about man's traditions concerning healing. Have you ever heard, oh, well, God just might not heal me because I've done so much wrong in my past that God won't heal me, you know? I mean, I've, I've heard that. I've come from, thank God, a background. But they didn't teach about supernatural divine healing. So it, it left me to believe, well, you know what? Maybe God wants to heal and maybe He doesn't, you know? And it just leaves so many unanswered questions. But when you get in the Word of God and you get revelation knowledge of that thing, you know that it is God's will to heal you and that He will heal every manner of disease. There is nothing impossible for God to do or to heal in the name of Jesus. Nothing impossible. But my heart goes out and I, I just say, when I go back home sometimes, and again, I'm sitting there and I'm like, oh. That's why I thank God for planting us in a place where we will bloom. I thank God for our pastors, Bishop Wright and Pastor Leslie that's teaching the Word of God, the true Word of God. Line up on line, precept upon precept. We are getting the Word of God and the teachings of God. So sometimes when I go back home, I just cringe because I'm like, oh, they are missing so much. It is so much more. You know, it is so much more. There's so much more to the Holy Spirit and to the gifts of the Holy Spirit and what He has and what He does for us. And I'm just speaking of myself. And so when I leave there and I, I go home, I'm just, sometimes my heart is just grieved because I'm like, ooh, Lord, they are missing so much. And that revelation knowledge. And you know, the Word of God says, "My people perish for a lack of knowledge because they just haven't been taught." But we have been taught the Word of God. Hallelujah. And when our hearts and our spirits are open to what thus saith the Lord, we have the Word of God. We know the difference between the traditions of men and the Word of God. This is just kind of one of a modern-day example of the traditions of men. Many churches or denominations have developed traditions over centuries. Some are helpful, but problems have arisen as well. People are judged or excluded for not following traditions not found in Scripture. An example, insisting that people must dress a certain way to attend church, even though the Scripture emphasizes modesty and the heart over outward appearance. But it is not, God is not looking at what they have on. God is looking at our hearts. God is looking at our motives. He's looking at our attitude, you know? And when Pastor Leslie preached recently about the people, "Do you really see them?" That's what God is looking at. When they come through those doors, no matter, you know? And Pastor Logan says this all the time. They might not come in smelling so good. They might not come in dressed up. But they are children of God. And we as the church, we as the body of Christ are to embrace them no matter what they look like, what they smell like. But we got some good news to tell them. Amen? We have a Savior and His name is Jesus. And when they come through those doors, that's where we want to share the love of Christ with them in the name of Jesus. Not what they have on, not what they look like or smell like, in the name of Jesus. Hallelujah. People may go to church, this was another one, and I'm gonna leave that alone on those traditions. People may go to church, take communion or celebrate religious holidays, but live in contradiction to God's Word. They follow what we've always done instead of asking, what does God actually say? Have you heard that? Well, that's the way we always do it. That's the way it's supposed to be done. That's the way we always do it. But does it line up with the Word of God? And sometimes we have to check ourselves. Not sometimes, a lot of times, we have to check ourselves. Does that line up with the Word of God? It doesn't matter if that's what it, what we've always done, but does it line up according to the Word of God? And when it does, we can say amen about it. So tonight, I had a few more notes, but I'm gonna just touch very quickly, have just a couple of minutes. And it says on your syllabus, "Kicking over sacred cows." Paul's thorn in the flesh. If you have your book, I'm coming from pages 45 and 46, where Reverend Hagan is speaking about 2 Corinthians 12:7-10, thorn in the flesh. It clearly states that Paul's thorn in the flesh was a messenger of Satan. And for time's sake, I'm not gonna be able to get into it. I will pick it up next week. Amen in the name of Jesus. But I do want to say this. That thorn in the flesh was not a sickness. That thorn in the flesh that Paul was experiencing was a messenger of Satan. And this, and he said, everywhere he went, that messenger was there to buffet him. Paul said, to give him a hard time, to always be there. But it wasn't about sickness. It was about the messenger of Satan. But I'm gonna pick that up, praise God, on next week in the name of Jesus. I pray that you were blessed in the name of Jesus. And at this time, it is 7:45 and Pastor Logan is going to come at this time. I, I said, I had to wait till 7:45 so Pastor Logan wouldn't say that I, I ended early. In the name of Jesus. So Pastor Logan will come at this time. It's 7:45, Pastor Logan. Be blessed and I pray that you were blessed. Praise God. Hallelujah. Is God good? Amen. Is Jesus still on the throne? Amen. Praise God. Hallelujah. Well, it's opportunity to prosper. Amen. Praise God. So if you need a titling envelope or anything, it should be one on your seat. If not, raise your hand and we can get you one. Praise God. How many of you know it's an easy thing to give back to God what He gave to us, isn't He? I heard a man of God says, "I ain't gonna go to hell, I'm not gonna go to hell for 10% of anything." So he only asked for 10%. So guess what? And that is, and I quote Mark Hankins, he said that. He said about tithe. But I tell you, God is so good because He gives seed to the sower. And we are grateful and thankful unto Him because He does, He does that. And in Corinthians, actually 2 Corinthians, chapter 9 and verse 7, it tells us that each of us should give what we have decided in our own hearts. Amen? How many of you know wherever your treasure, your heart is, that's, there is where your treasure is. And so God has blessed us to be able to give. And Luke 6:38 tells us to give and that it will be given back to us, "good measure, pressed down, shaken together, and running over shall men give unto our bosoms." There are so many Scriptures that undergird the principle of tithe. And I had to learn, amen? Because at the beginning of, I learned tithe. I hit and missed. I know that ain't none of y'all. I did, but I, I realized, I got that revelation that everything I have comes from God. And He, and He, and He showed it to me in the form of a dollar. He said, "I just want a dime out of that dollar. I'll let you keep that 90 cent." And so He's so good about being a blessing. And when we do that, we honor God and it's a form of worship. We're worshiping the Lord. Most people think worship is when you come to the church and you raise your hands and you close your eyes and you worship God. But giving is worshiping the Lord. And so we're gonna pray over our offering as we give unto Him because He blesses us with it, amen? Praise God. So lift your offering, your tithe and offering up to Jesus. He's our high priest as we join together in faith and pray. Father, in Jesus' name, we thank you so much for giving us seed to sow. And each of us, we are giving as we have decided in our own heart and holding on to the promise that you will give back to us, "good measure, pressed down, shaken together, and running over shall men give unto our bosoms." And we have a great expectation, Lord, in the name of Jesus, to receive our harvest. And when our harvest come, we will put the sickle in the field and we will take it in Jesus' name. Lord, we give you all the praise and glory for it and all in agreement, say amen. Amen. You may receive the offering, amen? As they are receiving the offering, praise God. I just want to remind you, we have our Harvest Festival and picnic this weekend, amen? Y'all saw the tent out there. So they say it's going to rain, but how many of you gonna join your faith with my faith that the rain will be held back? If Elijah was a man just like us and he stopped it from raining, I too can believe God that it won't rain, amen? Praise God. It will not rain in Jesus' name. Hallelujah. Also, we're gonna celebrate Pastor Leslie's birthday, amen? Praise God, hallelujah. So when you come on Sunday, get a little envelope or something. And as the Lord lay on your heart, be a blessing to her and all the leaders. They already know what they are doing, going to do. Don't forget that we still can bring some candy. Come on now, I think they back there doing something. They gonna be packing it up Sunday. So they gonna need some volunteers with that. Amen? Praise God. Those are just some current things that we will be doing this weekend. Amen. Praise God. Are you ready to talk about righteousness? Hallelujah. Glory to God. Well, let me just say this. How many of you now know who you are in Christ Jesus? How many of you have been exercising that right? Amen. Praise God. Hallelujah. So we're gonna pray and get right into it, amen? When I was back there, Pastor Wright said, "You ain't got to go to 8:45." Oh, praise God. Hallelujah. I said, "Don't be trying to cut my..." I said, don't be trying to cut my time. But praise God, we are so excited about this study, amen? Let's pray again, we're gonna over for our study tonight. Father, we thank you for Holy Spirit tonight, in the name of Jesus. We are students. And when the student is ready, the teacher will appear. Thank you for Holy Spirit teaching us tonight. Open up our ears that we may hear, our hearts that we may receive the engrafted word concerning righteousness. Thank you for this gift that you have given unto us. So it puts us right in the presence of God. Thank you for each of us, Lord God, that will not just be hearers, but we will be doers of the word. And we are so, be so careful to give you all the praise and glory for it. In Jesus' name, all in agreement, say amen. Amen. I'm just gonna finish up. Last week, we stopped a little bit early because our time had run out. But it's just a couple of things that I wanted to talk to you about, finish up, about unlimited righteousness, unlimited righteousness. Our righteousness in Christ Jesus enables us to come before the throne room of God without any sense of shame, inferiority, or anything like that. Amen. How many of you know the devil comes to accuse the brethren daily? You could have done something last week and the devil is still whipping you up about it. How you know he whipping you is because you keep thinking about it. If you keep thinking about it, then he's trying to enable a sin consciousness in you. But soon as that thought come to you about whatever it is that you did, or what I did, I use myself for example, if I did something wrong, amen, or I miss God in some way and I went ahead and asked God to forgive me, I receive it right then. Amen? Because He tells me that He throws my sin into the sea of forgetfulness. Forgetfulness. If God gonna forget it, then I'm gonna forget it. Amen? And so Pastor Logan, how can you forget it if it keep coming up in your fault life? Well, and the Bible tells me to cast down every high thing that tries to exalt itself against the knowledge of God and bring into captivity every thought and make it obey Christ. So what I do, I open up my mouth and I say, I don't know what you talking about because I'm not thinking about that. I've already been forgiven, I've been washed in the blood. Though my sins be as scarlet, I'm white as snow. One guy told me that one time when I said, he said, yeah, you just like that snow that been driven. You know how driven snow looked, don't it? Muddy. I said, well, I don't care what you say, I'm still pure. 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 Amen. Praise God. So there's no limit, the gods of righteousness has limitless possibilities. And so now we can walk right up to the throne room of God. We need to understand that we have been made righteous by the blood of Jesus. When God looks at us, when we have missed it, we have seen it. Put the word out there, seeing, you miss God, amen? When you ask God to forgive you, you have to exercise your right. It's a privilege. And you have to open up your mouth to say it. But I know the blood, the Word of God is voice activated. Amen? When these thoughts start bombarding you, you open up your mouth and you declare what God has already done for you. Amen. Praise God. So we have to understand that we are the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus. Remember the apostle Paul said at one time, he knew a man in Christ. Now you know who Paul was, Paul was a serial killer. But Paul said that after he met Jesus on the road to Damascus, Paul says, hey, I am a man in Christ, in the body or out of the body, I don't know. But one thing I know, I'm a man in Christ. And we are people in Christ, if we name the name of Jesus. Let's look at some Scripture here to just undergird that. We're gonna go to Galatians, chapter three and verse twenty-nine. How many of you know you an heir of God? Say I'm an heir of God. Amen. Now you know, if you know anything about an heir, they have an inheritance, don't they? Amen. But you not only an heir of God, but you are a joint heir through Christ Jesus. Amen. Praise God. And in Galatians three and twenty-nine, it said, and if ye beat Christ, come on now, if is conditional, right? And if ye beat Christ, then are ye Abraham's seed and heirs according to the promise. You an heir of God, a joint heir in Christ Jesus. The same rights and privileges that the Son has, now we have it in Jesus Christ, amen? And then Romans eight seventeen tells us about being joint heirs, amen? Let's go over and look at that. Romans, chapter eight and verse seventeen. Praise God. Say I'm a joint heir. Say it two times. Amen. You are a joint heir. So why am I having you to say that? Because confession brings possession. If you keep on saying it long enough, it's gonna rise up in you. And you not gonna walk the way you walked before because you know who you are in Christ Jesus. And in Romans eight seventeen, and this is what it says here. And if children, say I'm a child, then heirs, heirs of God, and what? Joint heirs with Christ. If so be that we suffer with him, we may also be glorified together. So that puts us right in, smack right in the middle of who God is. We are children of God. We have inherited everything that Jesus inherited. And so everything that is in heaven, because we are the righteousness of God, we can walk right up to the throne of grace to obtain whatever it is you feel in the blame. To obtain, what do you want? You have a right and a privilege to it because you are an heir. And whenever there's an heir, there has to be a will. The Word of God is the will. And if you can find it in the will, when you read the will, then you have access to it because you are an heir. Amen? If you don't show up at the reading of the will, you not gonna know what you have. So we are heirs of God. When I find it in the will, I go ahead and take possession of it. I do it by faith, amen? Do I have it right then? Yes. It's on the inside of me in Christ. Even Jesus Himself did not count it to be robbery to be equal with God because He was the Son of God. And if we are children of God, we are heirs of God and we are joint heirs through Christ Jesus, all because of righteousness, all because He made us right with God. We had no access to God. We was outside of the commonwealth of Israel. So but because of what Jesus did, He put us in there, right with the children of Israel. Abraham blessings are ours. And so we have to know that we have a right and a privilege to that, amen? So we are not to limit God. Don't limit Him. Know who you are. You have to know who you are, whose you are, and what belong to you. I heard a man say this, he says this about righteousness. He said, first of all, we must know what righteousness mean. Then we must know what righteousness produces. And then if we know what righteousness produces, then we can partake of what righteousness produced. So we want to make sure we know this. And I don't want you to come to this class, oh, this is a great class, but God is opening up your eyes of understanding to let you know, you're not just anybody, you are somebody. You are somebody. I had, I went to a family reunion this summer, my family on my side of the family, on my grandfather's side of the family, there's about two hundred people at this family reunion. And I didn't know some of them, but they would ask you your name and how you connected to the family. And I would tell them my mama's name and my grandfather's name. They said, oh, you Uncle Jack's granddaughter. So they knew who Uncle Jack was, but they didn't know me. But once I let them know who I belong to, they would say, oh, you somebody, amen? So one of the ladies, in fact, I probably, you probably have heard this, but we were up in Glen Allen, right? And so at my family reunion, there was a lady turned around and she had her father's picture on the table. She says, now, my father, he's a rich person. And so I came to this reunion to find out who some of my people are. And I said, well, oh, that's wonderful. And I told her who I was. And then she said to me, she said, now, I said, where are you from? She said, I'm from the Delta. I said, well, what part of the Delta? And she says, I'm from Glen Allen. I said, oh, Glen Allen. I said, I've been there several times and done outreach and mission work there. And she said, really? Where? I said, right there on that little spot on the corner, right there. And she said, I was there. She said, I got some fine dresses from over there. I said, oh, good. And she turns around, she said, that table over there, they got fifteen people there that over there, they are the richest. I said, oh, God, they kin to me? She said, yeah, they was there getting dresses there too. So I go over to the table and several of the elders were at that table. Elderly people, the older ones, you know, the seasoned saints, sitting at the table. And then I go over and I say, hello, family. And they looked at me real strange, they said, well, hello. And I said, I understand you from Glen Allen. They said, yes. And I said, well, I've been to Glen Allen before and I'm the one that we fed people up there. They said, oh, we were there. And I said, oh, that's wonderful. And I said, I'm coming back in July. I said, now, I'm gonna give you my, I'm gonna write my name on this piece of paper now right here and y'all put your phone numbers down there because I'm gonna call you. And so they did, they put it down. And then I said, I told them what we gonna do. We gonna feed you, we gonna bring you food, we gonna bring you clothes, and we gonna do VBS. We gonna be doing all of this stuff. And one of the older people looked over and said to me, she said, you must be somebody. I said, I am somebody. Guess who I am? I am the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus. And I told them, I said, well, you are somebody too. She said, I am? I said, yes, you are. She said, why you say that? I said, because you kin to me. That why you somebody? Guess what? We are somebody because we kin to Jesus and Jesus brought us in the family, amen? And one of these days, there gonna be a great big family reunion when we all get together. What a time, what a time it will be. Isn't that good news? Amen. Praise God. So I just wanted to finish up with that, to let you know you are somebody in Christ Jesus. And so tonight, we're gonna talk about the benefits of righteousness. So how many of you know we got benefits? How many of you like them bennies? They might not pay you enough, but the benefits will outweigh what they pay you. But the church does not appreciate, I don't think, I'm talking about not a particular church, but the ecumenical church, the church at large, the church of the Lord Jesus Christ, does not appreciate what the Word of God have declared that the church is. We are the church, the body of Christ. We are the church. And so we've learned early on in our teaching where the church have failed at. The church has failed at telling us who we are in Christ Jesus, as opposed to telling us we are the poor, we worm of the dust. But this class is to help us know who we are in Christ Jesus. And so the topic that we're gonna talk about tonight is that as the body of Christ, as the righteousness of God in Christ, we have total mastery over evil. I don't care what it is, how it's put before us, we have mastery over it, amen? And let me tell you what mastery mean. Mastery is defined as having full command, somebody said full command, or understanding of a subject. Mastery also means that we have the power of command and the power to control. No matter what evil try to come up against you, as the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus, you have the power to control it. You can command it, amen? And then also, mastery means that we have victory and we are superior to any evil thing that come against us. So that's who we are in Christ. And the Bible shows us examples of that. Let's look at this right here. Go with me to Acts, chapter nineteen. Acts, chapter nineteen, because if we can stand in the throne room of God, in His presence, amen, without any sense of fear or inferiority, then guess what? The blood of Jesus gives us that access there. And the blood of Jesus still works, amen? In Acts, chapter nineteen, we're gonna look at verses fourteen and fifteen. We see an example here. How many of you know the devil knows who Jesus is? Amen? And can I go a little bit further? Can I tell you something else? The devil know who you are too. Amen? He knows you. Amen? So Acts nineteen and verses fourteen and fifteen says, and there were seven sons of Sceva, a Jew, and chief of the priests. Somebody say he was the chief of the priests. Come on now, he's top dog, right? Which did so, verse fifteen. And the evil spirit answered and said, Jesus, I know, and Paul, I know, but who are you? Amen? And that's the question for us tonight. The devil knows who Jesus is. He knows who Paul is. The question for me and you is, do we know who we are? Because this demon that says, I know them, but who are you? And if you can't answer who you are, then he got mastery over you. If you can't answer about what belongs to you, then he'll take it from you. Because he comes to steal, kill, and destroy. Amen? A couple, some years ago, I'd say probably fifteen or so years ago, when we were at our former church, amen, that service was very high. I mean, the Spirit of God was moving. And Pastor Wright, at that time, he was preaching and the Spirit of God was moving. And then somebody over to my far right, yeah, it would be my far right, they got to just acting out. I mean, they started hollering and it just was not God. And so back then, I was the demon buster, you know? I still bust demons. But I passed that over to Minister Dory and she's the demon buster. Now I raised up for such a time. So but I went over and I said to the lady, I said, well, now, what you need to do is the power of God is here, present to heal, to deliver, and to set free. But you're gonna have to hear what the Spirit of the Lord is gonna say to you so that you can get your breakthrough. Because you need a breakthrough. And she calmed down. She calmed down. I said, now, because she was kind of shaking a little bit. I said, well, let's come on and let's walk out. And we had a senior room then. So we went into that senior room. And while we were in there, in that room, I was talking to her. And she said, oh, because how many of you know the devil, she's not a devil. Let me put that, let me say that, she's not the devil. Thank you, Holy Ghost, for that. She was not the devil, but she was under the influence of a spirit that was not of God. And so I said to her, I said, well, you know, what is it that really upset you? What was in the church that really caused you to become so upset? And she couldn't tell me what was there, what it was. And I said, well, okay, we got her some water and sat her down. And she said, she stood up and she looked me in the eye, she walked right up to me, she said, can I give you a hug? I said, yes, you may. You can give me a hug. But I didn't go right in, I went in sideways. Not frontal. Sideways. And she lunged for me and she was trying to bite my side of my face. She went for my ear. But when she went in, because I'm sideways, because that's what God told me to do, give her a side hug. She went in, when she went to bite, her teeth jumped out of mouth and jumped across the floor. And one of the dear mothers was in there, Mother Walton. Mother Walton said, baby, that ain't God. But it was okay. But guess what? The only reason that happened is because the Spirit of God was there. That's my point. The Spirit of God was there. I knew who I was in Christ. I'm hearing from the Holy Ghost. Amen. Praise God. But what we did, we set up counseling sessions for her, fed her the Word of God, amen? And everything turned out all right. Because we have total mastery over evil, over evil. Here, let me give you another example is, when we were in the little church, when we're not the big church, the little church across the street, one of the deacons was there and they came to get me. And they say, well, Minister Logan, there's someone outside the church. They wanna come in, but they don't want to walk on the grass. So I go out there and then one of the deacons went with me, actually, he's a minister. He went out with me. And I said to her, you wanna come to church? And what's my point? We have total mastery over evil because we are the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus. That's my point. I want you to stay with that. You gotta know who you are, whose you are, and the authority that you carry. Because Jesus have delegated to us authority. He said, behold, I give you power over all demons. He gave us that Luke ten nineteen. So I'm going out there, the dear sweet lady with her nephew, standing on the sidewalk. But you had to walk across a little grass to get to the front of the church. She got right to the grass, but wouldn't step on the grass. She said, but I wanna go to church. And I said, well, you're gonna have to step on this grass to go to church. And she says, but I can't. And I said, well, okay, then her nephew, uh, said, we've been to, on Glen Boulevard, we've been to the three churches down the street. And each one, she won't go in, and this is the one we stopped at. And I said, well, okay. Then the Holy Ghost said to me, he said to me, uh, I'm just gonna give her a name, but this is not her name. Let's just say her name was Suzie. Uh, he said to me, Holy Spirit, cause I'm listening to the Holy Ghost, uh, he says, you're not talking to Suzie. So I say, I don't want to talk to you. I want to talk to Suzie. And when I said that, she got, fell on the ground and was going on that grass like a snake. Just crawling, turning on the grass and Minister with me, he said, ah. And I said, pick her up. She got up. I lay hands on her. I said, in the name of Jesus, come out. She fell on the ground again. And she out, like she fainted. Then she opened her eyes. And I said, pick her up. She, he helped her up. I said, do you wanna go to church now? She said, yes, I do. And she walked in the church. We sat on the back row. We ain't come up to the front. And then Bishop did altar call and she got born again. Total mastery over evil. Because the devil, he doesn't, um, he's not that very smart, you know? But what he does want to do is keep us ignorant. And when we lack knowledge, that is, that is, uh, Hosea 4 6 tells us that. Uh, when we lack knowledge, we are destroyed. And so we know who we are, amen? So that's the reason why we have this class, to help us to know who we are in Christ Jesus. Let's look at another example. Matthew 8 and 28. Matthew 8 and 28. Here's another example here. Eight, we're gonna read verses 28 and 29, uh, from the King James Version. It says, "And when he was come to the other side in the country of the Gadarenes, there met him two possessed with devils, coming out of tombs, exceeding fears, so that no man might pass by that way." Verse 29. "And behold, they cried out, saying, What have we to do with thee, Jesus?" Come on, thou son of God. They know who Jesus is. "Art thou come hither to torment us before the time?" So they, they know who Jesus is. They know the purpose of why Jesus came. So demons know, uh, evil knows who you are. You can walk in a room, you can be on your job, and people will attack you for no reason. Because the devil knows who you are. You could be light in a dark place, but you gotta know who you are in Christ and not be intimidated by that. Amen. You stand up. I've had it to happen on my job. One girl, on a, a job I was on, that girl cussed me in the morning when I came. She'll come over to my bay and cuss me at, at, uh, at noonday. And when we clock out, she had to clock out cussing. I mean to tell, I said, I said to myself, why this girl? I didn't know what I know, like I know now. So I said, why is she hatin' me like this? But I realized later, when I got knowledge, it wasn't that it was me, it was who was in me. But I treated her nice. I mean, I was kind to her. And the Bible tells us that love will lead the way. I don't care how much she cussed me or whatever, I would be kind to her. I make up her packs for her. I do stuff for her. She's, she'll come in and, who made my blanket and blank packs? And they would say, Sandra. She'll tell me, ain't nobody told you that. But guess what? I realized she was just in a dark place. And when I, I was at that job for eight years, uh, before I came, uh, to work at Word of Faith. And when I left, that one girl came to me in tears. She said, all the stuff I did to you, I am so sorry that I did that to you. And she said, and then she said, can you pray with me before you go? Now, if I had the devil in me, I ain't praying for you. But I did pray for her, amen. Praise God. Do good unto those who do evil unto you, amen? Praise God. But the devil, he knows who we are. He knows who Jesus is and what Jesus was there for. Satan and demons know who we are, but often we don't know who we are. But they know who we are. And in John 16 28, write that scripture down. Jesus made a statement. He says this in John, John, St. John, excuse me, 16 and verse 28, King James Version. He says, "I came forth from the Father and am come into the world. Again I leave the world and go to the Father." Jesus is declaring who he was at that time and who he is. He had no problem saying who he was. I came from the Father. He offered a main statement, I and the Father, we are one. Amen. We can say that because we are the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus. The same very God that raised Christ from the dead dwells in us, amen? So we can lay, we can lay hold of those promises concerning us. We are born of God, amen? We, when we got born again, we were born of God. And you have to have faith in your righteousness, what Jesus did for us on the cross. Just like you had faith for salvation, uh, which is the gift of eternal life, you gotta have faith in the gift of righteousness, amen? It is a free gift that God gave to us through Jesus Christ. Jesus carried that out on the cross. And when he did that, he said, it is finished. And so now, we can stand in the presence of God as if sin never existed before. Well, what if I sin, Pastor Logan? Well, if you sin, he got provision for that, 1 John 1 9. And so when you, when you stand before the Lord, uh, uh, in the court of heaven, God does not condemn us, amen? Sin condemned, but God does not condemn. He only sees the blood. When we, when we own up to, confess mean to own up to. That I missed it, Lord, I'm sorry. But if you don't own up to it, it will fester and become a cancer in your spirit. And so he wants us to do that. And so we are so grateful and thankful to the Lord for that. Say, I'm an overcomer. Let's look at 1 John, chapter 5 and verse 4. We are overcomers, amen, because of the righteousness of God, what Jesus did on the cross. 1 John 5 4. Jesus overcame the world, the flesh, and the devil, amen? It says, "For whatsoever is born of God, what overcometh the world." And this is the victory. Say, I've got the victory that overcometh the world, what? Even our faith. That's why I made the statement. You've got to have faith in what God did through Jesus Christ and what Jesus did on the cross. If I don't have faith in what Jesus did on the cross for me, then I can't receive. Because we have to receive everything, uh, from God by faith. You gotta believe it and then receive it, and then you activate it by saying it. You get up in the morning and you say, I am the righteousness of God. I don't care how you feel. It doesn't have anything to do with feelings. It has to do with what God did. We believe the word, amen? And the word says that we are righteous, amen? And when we sin, that's unrighteousness. The word un is a prefix to righteousness. Praise God. What it means is that when we do something contrary to the word of God, then we become unrighteous. That's the unrighteous, not become, excuse me. We are doing an unrighteous act. But because of what God gave, gave us through Jesus Christ, we still are the righteousness of God. It's just, all you have to do is just go in, tell the Lord you're sorry. And then try not to do that again. But what if I do it again? Go back to say, go back there. So how many times? I don't care how many times. Cause we wanna, and here's the deal. If you don't do it, then the enemy comes in with shame. He comes in, uh, with inferiority, uh, guilt. You know how many guilty people, if you did a poll, you ought to just Google it. How many people walk around with guilt? And they are believers and they don't have to be guilty. God already took care of the guilt through Jesus Christ. I'm not guilty. I've been set free. Whom the Son sets free is free indeed. No guilt, no shame is going to hold us down, amen? When we know who we are in Christ Jesus. Praise God. So we are overcomers, uh, overcomers. We overcome, uh, the, we have overcome because we were born of God and by the blood of Jesus. And let me make this statement right here. And so repeat this after me. Say, until I know who I am in Christ, my faith will not work. Until you know who you are in Christ, your faith won't work. If you don't know who you are in Christ Jesus, cause we, we, we overcome. Here, the Bible says in 1 John 5 4, this is the victory that overcomes the world, even our faith. If we don't have faith in who we are in Christ, amen, then our faith can't work. Because you won't receive. I won't receive what God has for me. I won't be healed. I won't be delivered. I'll live as a poor weak worm of the dust and the generations after me will do it too. Because we'll say things like, you don't need all of that. You don't deserve that. Do you know who you are? We've been broke all our lives. My mama died of cancer. My daddy got shot. They all went to jail. Well, you're gonna go to jail too. Look at that girl. She gonna be. All of that comes from not knowing who you are in Christ Jesus. I had a dear friend that said to me, um, she owned, she had a beauty shop. And her girls weren't, they were born again, but you know, they were living in the world. And so some people came into her shop and, uh, she confessed the word of God over her girls. She had two girls. They, she confessed the word of God over them. She said, my girls, they are virtuous women. Uh, they're gonna have good husbands. They're gonna, uh, you know, she just spoke over them like that. And somebody came into her shop and they said, well, X, them girls ain't none but whores. And so she said, well, now I beg you pardon. I don't know who you're talking about. Cause them not my girls right there. My girls are virtuous women, amen, doggers. Here go me. And she didn't turn down that money. She went over there and she got her, it's a little towel that you put around you. The little thing, she said, come on over and slap it out and say, take my chair. Still did they have. But I thank God for that because she stood on what the word said about her family. Praise God. So you gotta stand on the word, amen? Though how many, you know, the world, the world ain't shaking. It's stalwarted, amen? So that means that our faith gives us a supernatural ability as a master over evil. Uh, the word of God gives us that supernatural ability to override every curse. Every curse, amen? We've been redeemed from the curse of the law. That word redeemed mean bought. We've been paid for. What was the price? The blood of Jesus. And when that blood was taken by Jesus himself, come on, he didn't sent it by nobody. Come on, he didn't say, hey, angels, take this blood to the holies of holies. He said, no, I'm gonna take my own blood and I'm gonna pour it on the mercy seat. He did that himself. He got up out of that grave, come on now, and he went to into heaven, come on now, took his own blood, put it on the mercy seat, whereas bulls, the blood of bulls and goats atoned for our sin. But every year, they had to do it over and over and over again. Every time they walk out, they go, they were stumbling. But Jesus himself took his blood. He put it on the holies of holies. And when he did that, God wiped away everything. And now we can walk flat footed, come on, straight into the throne room of God. And the curtain was open up and we ought to go up in there, not with no sense of inferiority. I am the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus. And he will say, what do you want? Come on now. Gotta know what you want. Don't go up in there not knowing what you want. Come to bring it with you. Come on, take the word with you, amen? Well, I'm coming in for healing, cause I have a word. You sent your word that I might be healed. Psalms 127, come on now, he sent it. I'm going with the word. Sometime I go with two or three things. Like today, I woke up this morning, I said, I am the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus. I've been redeemed from the curse of the law. I'm debt free, cause Jesus paid my debt over 2,000 years ago. I owe no man nothing but the loving. I picked up my bills and I said, pay yourself. Devil try, come in there and tell me, you ain't got this to pay this and you, you know, you owe this. And right there, I just opened up my mouth and I said, bill, pay yourself. Cause that's what, I know who I am and what I have. And he said that he will pay every bill, uh, Philippians 4 19. I, every bill according to, not what I got in my bank account, according to his riches in Christ Jesus. In Christ. Hear that? In Christ, all my bills are paid. In Christ, I'm healed from the crown of my head to the soles of my feet. In Christ, I'm going up and not under. In Christ, I'm going over, amen? In Christ, I'm on top of the mountain and the mountain ain't on me. In Christ. I mean, you put in there what you want to, I'm, I'm gonna put in there what I want to. Come on now. That's what I said. But we must realize, it's in the book. I must realize what it means to come boldly to the throne of Christ. So we have to realize that, that we can stand in the presence of God, right in the, walk right up in there. And if you ever, I know you have, sat in the presence of God, how sweet it is. Oh, sweeter. Yeah. Somebody said, sweeter than the honeycomb. Now, that, that, that statement right there, David made that statement because he was talking about the word. The word is sweeter than a honeycomb. But there are three levels of the word. There's the milk of the word. There's the meat of the word. But when you get to that honey, how sweet it is, amen? Praise God. Hallelujah. I don't think I got to the honey yet. I'm chewing on meat right now. You know how you get a piece of meat, you gotta chew for a while, right? So I think that's where I am. But we have to know that we are the righteousness of God and we will fear no evil, amen? Praise God. Hallelujah. And now I'm gonna just talk about, uh, Luke 10 19. Let's go over there. We are absolute masters. Say, I'm a master. Amen. You know, they got everything going around, you know, uh, let's go to this master class. Let's do this and master this and master that. Amen. That means that the person that's doing that, amen, have a lot of knowledge in that area. Uh, but we have a knowledge, uh, not according to man. Our knowledge is predicated upon the word of God, amen? And that's what gives us absolute mastery over the devil. And Luke 10 19, and this is what Jesus did, and we saw examples of how Jesus did that. And demons knew him. But Luke 10 19 says this, uh, King James Version, he says, "Behold, I give unto you," come on, say, that's me? That's right. Make it personal. "Behold, I give unto you power," somebody say, power, "to tread on serpents and scorpions." "to tread on serpents and scorpions and over somme, "all the power of the enemy, "and nothing shall by any means hurt you." Now, that word power there, translated from the Greek, it means, um, authority. The Amplified Version would say, because the Amplified Version gives you the exact translation of the Greek. That's why it's wordy. That's why it's wordy. Because it's giving you the exact translations from the Greek text. And so, Jesus is saying here, "Listen, "I behold, I have given you authority and power "to trample over all of the power of the enemy." That means he gave it to us physically. He gave it to us mentally. And he gave it, uh, uh, to us spiritually. So when the enemy comes and trying to attack your mind, you have authority over there. You can lay hands on your head and say, "I take authority over these thoughts right now in the name of Jesus. I plead the blood of Jesus over my mind." So you have to open up your mouth and say that. Because G, God wants us whole in every area of our life. What good is it to be physically fit and your mind is mentally, uh, you know, unstable? He wants us whole in every area. And when something comes and you think on it too hard, that's when you need to make a, you need to pivot from that. Cause now, you are meditating and the devil is trying to get a stronghold. So don't think on it. If it don't line up with the Lord, what God has said, cast it down. Cause I do it all the time. I say, "Uh-uh." My little grandbaby, she said, "Who you talking to, granny?" I said, "The devil." Uh-uh, we not doing that, right? So we need to make a distinction. Uh, we did do that. Make a distinction between power and authority. Power mean that we have the right. The authority, there, Jesus delegated that to us. The same thing he had, he gave it to us. And how we get the same results is when we exercise it by faith. Amen, we do it by faith. Jesus had both power and authority. Even the demons were subject. When the disciples went out and he sent them out by seventy and they came back, they said, "Jesus, even the devils were subject to, uh, the word." And he told them, "Don't be concerned about that. Just be concerned that your name is written in the Lamb Book of Life." Cause that's, that's a no brainer. Cause I blew on you. That's why. The Spirit of God, you know, the Holy Spirit, he hadn't died yet. And the Holy Spirit hadn't come, right? But that was over in Acts. But he blew on them and sent them out. And the same spirit that was upon him, he put it on them. And they exercised it when they went out, uh, two by two, amen. So a good example of this is, I just want to give you an example of is, uh, Bishop does, uh, uh, this analogy, a narrative. He giving us a narrative along these lines of a police officer. You know, the traffic is out there and you got cars and everything driving on the street or the highway. The police officer raises his hand up and you have to do what? Now, does he have the power to stop any car? It's predicated upon the power that's behind him. The whole weight of the law gonna back him up. Cause you gonna, well, you gonna stop. So what do you mean, Pastor Logan? I mean this. When Jesus gave us that authority and we exercised that authority, all of heaven, power in heaven backs us up. It's not, uh, Jesus said, "It's not I that do the work, but what?" Come on, death, come on. He said, "It is not I." They said, "Jesus, how can you do these miracles?" He said, "It's not I that do the work, "but the Father in me that does the work." The same thing apply to us. We by faith, exercise our authority by saying, not, not thinking, by saying. Because the word of God is voice activated. So if you want healing, you can't just lay there and think on it. You gotta open up your mouth to say it. That's when God puts the power behind it. Remember when David ran, uh, uh, to, uh, Goliath? And he was speaking as he was going and he was taking that slingshot? But every time he opened his mouth, a power went behind that thing. Cause he chose five smooth stones, right? It was so much power, it went right through his head. Come on, this, Bishop said, "That's how you get ahead in life." But, uh, and I agree. So we just have to understand, according to Luke, uh, ten seventeen, and we've read that before, how demons know who Jesus were, knew who Jesus were, where they know who we are. But we have to know who we are, amen. Praise God. Just a couple of more things I want to bring out and then we can, uh, go. God, I'm gonna end a little early tonight. I want you to repeat after me. Say, "I am a master." Because Jesus is our master. He is working through me. Yes, he is. He's working through us. Jesus became what we were that we might become who he is. Amen, praise God. And the authority of Jesus over demons is a profound aspect of his ministry. If you want to know more about that, go and read the Gospels in Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John. You're gonna see examples of it. How Jesus was a master over all of the work of the devil. That's why he was born. That's why he came to destroy the work of the devil. And so, now he has given us that responsibility, amen, to finish the work that he started, amen. He gave us the great commission, amen, to go into all the world and preach the gospel to every creature, amen. That's why we go out. And when we go out, we're not going in a territory that is all churchified. You going into the devil's territory. And if you skirt, stay at home. Don't even come, amen. Praise God, cause you'll get somebody hurt. Praise God. What if, cause you gonna be with two people? And I always tell one person, when I train people and they go out on the street, I say, "Listen, let one do the talking, "the other one do the praying and looking." Come on, don't close your eyes. Cause the devil, he will come upon you, amen. And he knows. He knows when you're going in, things will happen, amen. But you gotta know who you are in Christ Jesus, amen. So now, we have the right, uh, to exercise our authority that has been given to us in Christ Jesus and finish the work that Jesus started, amen. So let's look, uh, uh, John fourteen, Saint John, chapter fourteen and verse twelve. Write that scripture down. Saint John fourteen and twelve says this. Cause we are supposed to be doing the works of Christ. Praise God. Saint John, chapter fourteen and verse twelve. And I'll be reading it from the King James Version. And this is what it says. Jesus is, uh, saying this, you know, it's in red. He says, "Verily, verily, or truly, truly, "I say unto you..." Say, "That's me." "...he that believeth on me..." Say, "That's me." "...the works that I do shall he do also." Say, "That's me." "And greater works than these shall he do, "because I go unto the Father." So that's what he's telling us here. Hey, if you believed on me and you seen the works that I'm doing, you're gonna do those same works, but they are gonna be greater. And what he means by that is this, is that Jesus could only be at one place at one time. But now, we have a lot of Jesus all over the world. And the work that is being done is greater. Right now, even while we are in this class right now, people are being born again. People are being delivered. People are being set free. Those are the greater works, amen. So the moment Jesus sat down at the right hand of the Father, he empowered the church to go and finish the work that he had started in the earth. And that is our responsibility. And we have to know, in order to do that, we have to know who we are. We cannot be timid. We must be bold as a lion and gentle as a lamb, amen. When the devil rises head up, we are lion. This is in lions, amen. We are bold with what we coming with. We are bold like, cause the, the, one of the writers of the Gospel say, "I'm bold as a lion. I'm bold to live and Paul, I'm bold to die." You gotta have a boldness. And I tell you, every one of you after this class, you're gonna be some pretty bodacious folks. Amen, that's our class for the night, amen, praise God. Let's stand to our feet. We give God the glory. You're getting out a little early, about four minutes, amen. Praise God. We're gonna finish up next week. Amen, we just got a little bit more, uh, to do. Praise God.[1762.71]